Good evening and welcome to the May 13th, 2014 work session of the Gaston County Board of Commissioners. My name is Tracy Philbeck. I serve as Chairman of the Board as well as Commissioner for the Dallas Township. I'd like to welcome our viewers and thank Time Warner Cable and AT&amp;T for making this possible for our citizens. For the television audience, I'd like to present you your Gaston County Commissioners, beginning on my right. Good evening. Chad Brown, Riverbend Township.
Good evening. Mickey Price, South Point Township.
Good evening. Jason Williams, Gastonia Township.
Good evening. Joe Carpenter, Crowder's Mountain Township.
And good evening also, Tom Keeger, Gastonia Township.
Thank you, gentlemen. Our first item is Proclamations, Commendations, Awards and Certificates. First up is Commissioner Keeger for a retirement commendation for Ms. Georgia Ann Putnam, Communications Supervisor. And whoever else you brought with you, if they're not camera shy. They're all getting up now.
This is always one of the more enjoyable experiences when we have meetings is to recognize folks that have helped the county over the years. And I'll just get right to it. Whereas Telecommunications Supervisor Ann Putnam is retiring from the Gaston County Police Department E-91 Communications. And whereas Tele-Communication Supervisor Putnam has served with this agency since June 11th, 1984. And whereas, when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of police officers, firefighters, paramedics is critical to the protection of life and the preservation of property. And whereas, public safety telecommunicators are the first and most critical first contact our citizens have with the emergency services. And whereas, Tele-Communication Supervisor Ann Putnam has during her long career displayed caring, compassion and professionalism in her performance of her duties. And whereas, through her knowledge and ability, Ann Putnam has risen to the rank of Tele-Communication Supervisor. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Gaston County Board of Commissioners commends Tele-Communication Supervisor Ann Putnam and expresses their sincere gratitude for her dedicated service. And we wish you the best in your retirement. And I will present you with this proclamation. Congratulate you and ask you to say a word or two.
Okay. I had to write it down because I'm not into public speaking. First of all, I'd like to thank Gaston County for hiring me at the age of 21. Thank you to retired Police Chief Bert Holmesley and Communications Director the late Bob Phillips for giving me a chance. Thank you to my second Communications Director, Tom Riley, for having faith in me and promoting me to Supervisor. I also want to thank my family for their support through the years and rescheduling family celebrations and holidays around my work schedule. I made a lot of lifelong friends while I worked for the county. And I've also lost my precious parents along the way. I wish they were here with me. Again, I want to thank everyone for the last 30 years and I want to wish you all well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next commendation is a retirement commendation for Mr. Okay. Commissioner Keeger will give a commendation to command the Gaston County Senior's Health Insurance Information Program, SHIP Volunteers.
Well, Mr. Smith's up here, so let's let Jason come on down.
Okay.
This is called a glitch.
Sorry about that little bit of confusion. Commissioner Fraley is out with a family issue and just keep his family in your prayers Whereas, Paramedic Ronald Smith is retiring from the Gaston County Emergency Medical Services. And whereas, Paramedic Ronnie Smith has served with Gaston County since June 25th, 1986, most recently serving on the Crowder's Mountain Quick Response Vehicle. And whereas, when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of paramedics is essential to the preservation of life, the reduction of morbidity, morbidity, and promotion of safety. And whereas, Paramedic Ronnie Smith has during his long career displayed preparedness, proficiency, pride and compassion to provide excellence in patient care no matter where an emergency occurred in the performance of all of his duties. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Gaston County Board of Commissioners wishes to express their sincere gratitude for the dedicated service of Paramedic Ronnie Smith.
I'd just like to say thanks for letting me work here in Gaston County and the opportunity to work for you for the last 28 years. Thank Bob Phillips and Nellie Walker for giving me that chance. And I'd like to thank my family for standing behind me, working with my work schedule, having worked nice shifts in weekends I missed a loss for them. But I'm going to enjoy the time off with them now, so I appreciate it.
Now at this time, Commissioner Keeger will give a commendation to command the Gaston County Senior's Health Insurance Information Program Volunteers. Commissioner Keeger.
Thank you. Yeah, the back. Who's going to join me? Everybody, come on. Get your five minute of fame on the TV, huh? While they're coming up, I would, this is a special honor for me to present this, being I make my living as a Medicare Specialist. A lot of people don't know that I do other things and hang around the county offices. But I am a state licensed and certified Medicare Specialist and it's the only insurance I deal with. So if anybody out there needs any help figuring things out, just give me a call. Jim, I guess you're going to, Jim's not here?
He's right there.
Yeah, you're supposed to receive it. I saw you out in the hallway.
I'm the coordinator, they're the volunteers.
It says in red, Jim Burke will accept. All right. Whereas Gaston County Senior's Health Insurance Information Program, otherwise known as SHIP, their volunteer counselors provide counseling to Medicare beneficiaries at no cost and assist county residents in understanding Medicare plans, programs and the overall functioning of the Medicare system, providing them with the information necessary to enable them to make informed decisions on which Medicare options best fit their current needs. And whereas, during the 2013 Gaston County SHIP Volunteers provided counseling and assistance with Medicare benefits, health plans, billing issues and potential fraud to over 840 clients. And whereas, during the 2013 Gaston County SHIP Volunteers participated in or conducted 49 outreach events, including health fairs, presentation to church and healthcare groups and articles in the print media to educate county residents on the SHIP services and Medicare program changes, plans and benefits. And whereas, in addition to the peace of mind many county residents experience after meeting with our volunteer counselors, as a direct result of our volunteers' times and experience, clients are able to make educated decisions on the best healthcare options for themselves, often realizing significantly reduced costs on their prescriptions. Clients also learn about possible additional assistance through pharmaceutical manufacturers' assistance programs. Volunteer counselors also educate clients on additional assistance for low-income households that may further reduce the cost of prescription medication. This assistance can result for less, for more income for clients to use for other essential needs. And whereas, before receiving SHIP counseling, clients often could not afford their medications due to the high cost of medicine and lack of available income. In 2013, SHIP Volunteer Counselors saved Gaston County Medicare beneficiaries over $253,000 in drug costs alone. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Gaston County Board of Commissioners commends the Gaston County Senior Health Insurance Information Program and their volunteers, namely Sharon Bryant, Wendy Conley, Stephanie Hall, Sabrina Johnson, Shamika Johnson, Jerry Landhart, Patty Plaskin and Dr. William Woody, for their outstanding commitment and dedication to helping their fellow citizens. Through education and assistance, Gaston County SHIP Volunteers enable clients to obtain critical healthcare and medication necessary to maintain the quality of life. And for many clients, it means no longer choosing between buying food and buying medicine. This too will also be adopted on the 27th of May. And I will present this to Jim and see if Jim wants to say a word or two. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. I'm Jim Burke. I work with the Cooperative Extension Service and the Cooperative Extension administers about 30% of the SHIP offices throughout the state and Gaston County happens to be one of those offices. This was, I didn't really intend to be up here. It was really for our volunteers. They do the brunt of the work. I coordinate efforts, but we could not do the program and be as successful as we are without the dedication of our volunteers. And unfortunately, everyone couldn't be here tonight, but Patty Plaskin, Jerry Landhart and Dr. Bill Woody have been with the program for a long time. And they have, their dedication every year is a real example for others as to what people can do for their community and how they can give back. So it's really about the volunteers. Thank you.
I will say something because I have a big mouth. We are in great need of additional volunteers. If you enjoy helping people, if you like people, if you think it would be interesting to learn about Medicare and help people navigate the different ins and outs of Medicare, we would love to have you as a volunteer. So think about it. You can contact the Cooperative Extension Service and they can tell you how to do it. You can train online so that you don't have to come to a class. You can do this in your pajamas at home and train and it will be a very rewarding experience. So think about it or think about someone you might know who would enjoy being a SHIP Medicare volunteer. Thanks.
Our next item is commendation from Commissioner Williams to recognize nurses and healthcare professionals of Caramont Regional Medical Center.
All right. I'm going to ask Mr. Doug Luckett and Ms. Bonnie Faust if they'll join me up at the podium. Mr. Luckett is the President and CEO of Caramont and Ms. Faust is the Chief Nursing Officer. Also in attendance, we have some people from our senior leadership team, Mr. Richard Blackburn in attendance and one of our board members, Michael Peoples, Michael Dixon. Not to tell management, Kraverson. And we have Alex Mullino in Dallas Patten who work in PR and marketing. So we're thrilled to have you guys here with us tonight. I will say real quick, probably the most rewarding thing that I've done since I was elected was the last 16 months being on the Caramont Board of Directors. And it's really been an honor. We've been through a couple of difficult times, well documented difficult times. But to see some of the people we work with and to actually get to know a lot of these professionals and the dedication that they have to their craft and to healthcare in Gaston County really amazes me. And I'm just so thrilled to know that we have these people in our own backyard. And so getting to work with them and actually see them in action, you should really take comfort in the fact that we have high-quality people working at our hospital. So I wanted to say that it's just been amazing to get to know these folks. Whereas, National Nurses Week was May the 6th through the 12th, 2014, and National Hospital Week is May 11th through 17th. And whereas, healthcare professionals across the country are celebrating these time-honored events. And whereas, the healthcare professionals of Gaston County strive to provide safe and high-quality patient care every single day and provide guidance to continually improve and enhance our community's health. And whereas, the nearly 4,000 employees, including 1,082 registered nurses who work at Caramont Health comprise the largest private workforce in Gaston County. And whereas, the demand for healthcare professionals will be greater than ever in coming years due to the aging American population, the continuing expansion of life-saving technology and the changing landscape of the healthcare industry. And whereas, our county's hospital, Caramont Regional Medical Center, is a magnet designated hospital that attracts the highest trained professionals in the country to provide world-class healthcare to our community. And whereas, the individuals who have dedicated their careers to helping people in our community by working at our hospital deserve universal regard and appreciation for serving a critical role in keeping our county healthy. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Gaston County Board of Commissioners recognizes May 6th through 12th as National Nurses Week and May 11th through 17th as National Hospital Week. Be it further resolved that the residents of Gaston County express their appreciation for the nurses and healthcare professionals at Caramont Health who make high-quality, reliable healthcare available in our community.
Thank you so much. It's an honor and a privilege to be here to accept this commendation for the nurses of Caramont Health. It's truly deserved for the hard work and dedication that they show every day in caring for our patients. So thank you.
I'd just like to personally thank the Commission for recognizing the great people who do the work day in and day out. And no matter your feelings about healthcare reform or other issues surrounding a lot of upheaval in healthcare, I think you guys have always been there to see the few people who do the work day after day and they go to church with you and see you in the Walmarts and the Targets and the ball fields and to know that they stress every day on how to provide better care to the folks they serve around this area. So thank you again for this commendation. It means more than you'll know. Thank you.
Hey Doug, one thing I want to say to you, I don't know how they always say the President has the first 100 days, but every how many days you've been and your staff is impeccable out there. I want to commend you and your staff and everything you've done out there to make the things go right, that the Commission is honored to be a part of that.
Commissioner Brown, thank you very, very much.
Our final commendation is Commissioner Price to recognize Gaston County Public Health Nurses. Commissioner Price.
Thank you. Would Mr. Steve Eaton and Cynthia Stitt join me at the podium? Whereas, over 1,000, 22,000 registered nurses in North Carolina and 2,241 in Gaston County represent our largest healthcare resource. And whereas, nurses are the cornerstone of the public health infrastructure by providing culturally competent healthcare and education to prevent disease and promote community health. And whereas, public health nurses also provide leadership to eliminate healthcare disparities. And whereas, the 47 nurses at the Gaston County Department of Health and Human Resources work year-long to promote health of all Gaston County residents. And whereas, the theme of National Nurses Week 2014 is Nurses Leading the Way. In celebration of the many ways our dedicated nurses provide high-quality patient care and health services to improve community health. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Gaston County Board of Commissioners extends its gratitude to Gaston County Public Health Nurses and requests all residents of this community to join in honoring the nurses who work to improve the health of Gaston County residents throughout the year. This to be adopted the 27th day of May, 2014.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
And all of you may.
We would like to thank the Commissioners for honoring our public health nurses in Gaston County. We are one truly public core association that we go out and we ensure that the safety of the public is there. We are able to provide services in the clinic, in the homes and in the sheltering times. And it is indeed an honor to accept this commendation for all the public health nurses in Gaston County as well as public health as a whole. We appreciate it and thank you again.
I'd also just like to take a moment to thank you all for this recognition. It is, it truly is an honor and a privilege to work alongside the nurses at the Health Department. They work passionately. They do so and treat every client and patient that comes through our doors with dignity and respect, many of whom live on the margins of society. And they work very hard to ensure that everybody receives the healthcare that they deserve in our county. We have wonderful partners at Caramont. It's a pleasure to partner with them to ensure the health and well-being of Gaston County citizens as long as, as well as those at the school system. So thank you to all of our community partners and the Commission as well.
Next, we have Certificates and Appreciation for Public Service. And let me add my thanks to the ones that's already received their recognition. And one of them was a young lady that I grew up with at the Myrtle Mill Village, Geraldine Jenkins Landhart. She married a good friend of mine. Geraldine was the best-looking girl on the block. Well, except my wife Gloria. How about I put that in? But thank you, thank all of you. And Dr. Woody, thank you. Go to church with Dr. Woody. But it is a great pleasure for the Gaston County Commissioners to honor citizens who have unselfishly given of their time, talent, skills and energies in service as an appointee to one of our Boards of Commissioners. This type of service is a foundation for citizen involvement in our county government in its helping shape the future of our community. We gratefully acknowledge the work of the following individuals and certificates of appreciation have been forwarded to them. Tim Corvino, Randy Neal, Emergency Medical Services. Deborah Alley, Family Advisory Board. Reese McGloin and Keith Moon, Juvenile Crime Prevention Council. Jerry Campbell, Mountain Island Lake Commission. Jerry Campbell Planning Board. Walter Payne, Travel and Tourism Advisory Board. Joey Fortune and Keith Moon on the Workforce Development Board. And Keith Moon and Sharon Riggins for Work First Block Grant Plan Committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Carpenter. Our next item is Citizen Recognization. Limited to one hour. Sign up prior to start of session. Comments are limited to five minutes. We have one signed up, Mr. John Roberts. If you would, please state your name and address when you get up to the podium.
Thank you very much. My name is John Roberts. I live in Bessemer City. I'm a volunteer Guardian Adelaideham. And I'm here to try and raise awareness of the conditions that we're experiencing whilst trying to do our volunteer service. As you know, last month was Child Abuse Awareness Month and this month is the Foster Care Awareness Month. I just completed an internship as part of my Human Services Program at Gaston College. And I did an internship with the Guardian Adelaideham Office and was really alarmed at some of the things that I discovered. If I may, I'd like to share some information. There are currently 213 children being served in Gaston County alone. We have 75 children who have no Guardian assigned to them. Each of these children is entitled to a volunteer Guardian under North Carolina law. We have a total of 44 volunteers. Last year, they completed 4,224 hours of volunteer work. We saved the state $93,519. We have 38 foster homes in Gaston County. We don't have enough foster homes. We're sending children out of county. And when we do that, is when they fall through the cracks. Because the only thing that we can do is to request neighboring jurisdictions to make a courtesy visit to the children. This is where, this is where the disasters occur. And I am here to urge you to please work with the Guardian Adelaideham Office to raise awareness of the need for more quality foster homes and to work with the Guardian Adelaideham Office to increase volunteerism. One of the things that we could use help with is some public service announcements so as to raise the awareness of the need. As you can see, as I said, 4,224 hours of volunteer service were provided by Guardians in Gaston County last year. The financing for all this, the burden is carried by the Guardians themselves. We travel all over Gaston County, visiting schools, psychiatrists, psychologists, teachers, foster homes, and we carry that cost ourselves. We even have to pay for parking at the courthouse when we come in to bring the reports, which I think is a little insulting. I would really, I'm here to request that you gentlemen pay some attention to this problem. We've had prayer, we've had speech, now we need action. And I'm here to urge that, please. I do have some information that I'll leave with Ms. Buff and there are also some brochures. I might just mention that I met with the city council and Mr. Munn had approved the extending of payment to city workers who engage in this volunteerism. They were already allowed to help people to become mentors in the literacy program. Now he's included in it. People who wish to serve as a Guardian Adelaideham can be paid by the city for a few volunteer hours a month. And if that's a possibility, it would be a great help if it could be extended to the county. These are just my ideas. I'm here to request this, not on behalf of myself, but on behalf of this great number of children. Because if we don't help them now, we certainly will need to be helping them later. And it won't be any cheaper if we wait. So thank you. I hope you'll take this request seriously. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts.
Thank you, Ms. Buff. Thank you.
Just for information, I also received a letter from Mr. Kevin Proctor, Program Supervisor from North Carolina Courts for the Guardian Adelaideham Program. And one of their requests is if we could offer free parking to the volunteers when they come up here for court. Courts normally held on Tuesdays. They only average five or six volunteers present each week. I'm a certified Guardian Adelaideham volunteer as well. But I think what they're asking is during those days if their volunteers could have free parking and they put, I guess it's placard that they could put in the windshield. I could pass it along to you guys. Just want, I don't know if y'all are interested in doing that, if y'all would be okay with that.
It's logical. It's a no-brainer.
Okay, okay. Then what I'll do is I will give this to Donna Buff, our clerk, if you could inform Mr. Proctor that we're okay with it. As long as it has these copies and we'll go from there.
I think Chuck has to, he said, check into whether or not we have to vote on it at our next meeting.
Okay. Well, if we have to vote on it, we can all sponsor that together. So we'll check on that, see what we need to do. But I think there's consensus to do that. I'm sure there's I'm sure there's other areas we can help. Thank you, Mr. Roberts.
Thank you very much.
And I think Commissioner Carpenter, you serve with his wife on the MPO?
Yes, I do. Hey. You know what, she's retired.
Okay, okay.
Mr. Chairman, he mentioned needing volunteers. You might want to let the audience at home know how someone could get involved, that they start the process.
Well, Mr. Roberts, do you, if you could go back up to the podium, if you could just give folks a number, website address on how they could get involved?
Thank you.
If you could keep it short as well, please.
I will. The, the city has just provided a link from the city website to the Guardian at Leitum website. So anybody who wishes to volunteer can just visit the Gaston City website, where they'll find a link to the Guardian at Leitum office. I'm afraid I've just had some eye procedures, and I'm not able to read the brochure that I just gave to Ms. Buff. Otherwise, I'd be glad to read out the numbers.
That's fine. What we can do, maybe we can put it on the county website.
That would be great. If you could do that, you know the situation, any help would be great.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you. Our next item is presentation of Cable Access Public Information Department, replacement of equipment. Mr. Todd Ward, Cable Access Coordinator.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. To echo that, we can also run that on the channel. We can run that telephone and the contact information for the Guardian at Leitum on the channel. You had asked us to come and give you a report, a quick report, on the status of the equipment. Quickly, for those of you, those of you who may not know, we went on the air in September of 98. Since then, there's been a lot of changes to the television industry. We've gone from the National Television Standards Committee set of standards to ATSC, which is now digital TV. That was 2009. Over the years, we've been able to replace only about 45% of that equipment. So you're looking at equipment and looking through equipment that's better than 16 years We've tried to replace what we can, but obviously with some of the bad budget years, you can only do so much with, with what you have. So, items that are failing, obviously, are the cameras. Mr. Fraley, I think, has been the victim of some of the symptoms of the cameras. Mr. Brown, you've probably heard him as well. Yeah, squeaking, the incessant squeaking. We tried to break into that camera to repair it. We could only get so far, and, you know, a camera of that price, we were afraid to go a little farther. So basically what we did, we just moved the camera. So, another symptom you'll see of the cameras failing is that, once you get a shot, this particular shot you're seeing on the DAS monitors, it'll start to drift after a while on its own. So what may be a perfectly framed shot will end up looking at the Elmo or looking at the TV without you asking it to go there. Other pieces of equipment, and I'm just, to keep it brief, I'm just kind of going through my notes. We record all of our meetings on a hard drive now. You guys get some, you, you get some of the DVDs that we make. Those DVD recorders are starting to fail too, and we may not be able to get new recorders. So, we're trying to figure out a fix for that, so that you guys can still get your copies like you, like you've been getting. But the hard drives that we use to play back are starting to pixelate when they play back, get real blocky. And that, in and of itself, is, is drive failure. It's a symptom of drive failure. If we replace the drives to a newer set of drives, they're not supported by our older equipment. So we get into kind of a, of a tipping point, where our equipment is so aged, we, if we replace it with a new piece of equipment, it doesn't match up with the older equipment. So we have to replace that lower, or that previous piece of equipment. So it's, the, all of the stuff is interdependent on the other piece. The DAS monitors need to be replaced. Obviously, they're not of the ATSC standards. We had one go out not too long ago. It affected all of the rest of them. And I think if you look at the one on the very end, it's a little more green than the rest of them. That in and of itself is, to us, is showing signs that it's starting to fade. We had, the one that did go out, we were able to rob a spare from the back, bring up here. We're out of spares. So, we've lost two of the forum monitors, nearly all of our VCRs. And you'd be surprised, we do get the occasional tape. Somebody come in and asks us to do something that's on a tape. We've had monitors go back, go out in the back on the broadcast system. Our sound system has been replaced, and we tried to replace that with new digital equipment to kind of forward think that. Probably the closest thing we've experienced to going off-air was one of the recent inductions. And not many people know, I believe it was the Thursday before the induction, the power supply to our fiber transmitter started emitting a nasty smell. It was starting to burn up. We called the manufacturer. It's no longer manufactured. He had just enough spare parts on his shelf to build us one, and UPS read it to us so that we could stay on the air for the induction. It's, it's that close, and the equipment's that old. Again, to keep it short, in a nutshell, it's an outdated system with a bunch of very key components trying to fail on us. And we don't know when a particular item's gonna go. We could come in to do a meeting, and it could fail. We had a switcher go out on the city one night, and they nearly, we nearly went off-air for that. So, any questions?
Commissioner Carpenter?
Bottom line, you've worn out all of our equipment.
Pretty much. We've tried to.
Okay, but, but bottom line, what's, what's the solution?
We need to get rid of the NTSC equipment, the analog equipment. There was a list that was passed around that, that had the analog. Whatever pieces of equipment is on that list, and it says analog, whatever reason is out to the side, that's why it needs to be changed out. Cameras fail, it won't match up to the new equipment that's being sold. We can't plug it into the, the old stuff.
Okay, good. Any other questions from the board? Commissioner Price?
Thank you. I've got your list here, Mr. Ward. Is there, in your opinion, a way to do it over a period of time, and assuming nothing breaks or fails, and not have to do it all at one time, in your opinion?
Some items we can bring in on a phased approach, but there are some items that are so ingrained in that system that, once you remove it, you have to replace the downstream or the upstream items well. We will certainly, you know, try to do it as a phased thing, would, you know, but to promise that, I can't.
Oh, I know, you can't promise. I was just trying to see if we could get by without spending a lot all at one time. So, is there a dollar value associated with your list? Mine didn't have one on it.
Okay. Actually, I have kind of a breakdown of all the costs. The list that's coming around is a list of the majority of the items that's in this facility. When it went online, what it does, and kind of a budgeted amount for what it would cost to replace it.
Okay. I would've guessed some more.
What's, what's our deal with the city? Do they participate in this?
Commissioner Price?
The city?
I, I can handle that. I, I'll, I'll help you on that one. Basically, what happened, I sent an email to the city council, asking them, since they use the facility, if they would look at sharing the cost just for the timeframe they're in here. And I don't think, there's that camera, it's drifting.
That one was planned.
Was that planned? I don't think there's probably gonna be a lot of help. So what I would recommend, and I've talked to county manager about this, if we decide we want to do this, is we would raise the rent that this room is rented to cover our costs for their portion. So, they can either work with us, because they use the facility, or we can raise the rent to cover that.
Okay.
Does that help?
Yeah. Commissioner Brown?
Mr. Ward, is there an opportunity that we may be able to umbrella all these items that you're looking for with one particular company, one system itself, to help reduce the costs? Or maybe have a company say, hey, they want to buy in with Gaston County, not as sponsorship, but something that says, Samsung says they want to do something of a new prototype that we could get into. Is that something that we could look into? Or is it something that's not available for what our equipment we're looking for? Or is those options still something we can explore?
Something we could explore.
And I also noticed on your list, you only had 21 items. There's not a slimming camera.
Did I leave that out?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Brown. So the total I have here is $309,400. And if I'm correct, if we replace all of these items, we will be up to date, everything's new, where, where you're saying we need to be.
Warranties, the whole nine yards.
Okay. Just a couple comments. We are one, the only government agency, or governing body in Gaston County, that has all of our meetings on TV. City of Gastonia has one of their meetings, but we actually have all. I think the citizens want transparency, and I think one of the best ways to have transparency is to televise all of our meetings. I do know at times when a commissioner's out of town and they call in, you really can't understand them, the phone's kicking in and out. So, it, it's something I definitely support. I like others, I don't like spending the money, but this is not reoccurring cost. I'm assuming this is one-time cost for how long?
Average service life on equipment like this is anywhere from five to seven years. Am I gonna come back and ask for another 309,000? No.
And keep in mind, we have stretched the previous five, seven years for how long?
Yes, for about 16 years.
Okay. So the lifespan's about 16 years?
Pretty much.
Okay. If, if, unless there's objection, I'd like to put this item on the May agenda, and just put it on consent, unless you have any questions now, to approve to get it fixed. Again, I think the citizens expect it, a lot of, I, I get a lot of folks that call, hey, can I get a DVD of your meeting, things of that nature. So, I think it's something expected. It keeps us transparent. I think it keeps us close to the people that we represent. And I, I think it's something they expect, and, and it should be good quality. Not only that, there is a way to recoup the cost, some of the cost, and that is, when folks use this facility, based off of their time of usage, we can charge them based off how much it costs us to fix. So, that's my thoughts. Commissioner Price?
Thank you. Is there, I do like the suggestion of recouping some of the cost by the rental fee, but is there, is there a way to bid all this out to one company? Does one company do all this, or there's, is it gonna have to be, I didn't know, like Commissioner Brown suggested, if, if somebody was, had some new technology they wanted to showboat, then they could submit a bid, and hopefully, it would be competitive?
Right. We can put it out as a bid. There are some items that are so plug-and-go. We have a DVD replicator on there that makes, it does just that, it copies DVDs that we do in-house. It's just plug it into the computer and go. Obviously, those wouldn't be go, they, they wouldn't need to go out. We can do that ourselves. But the system type of, the cameras, or the switcher, or something like that, yeah. We can lump those and ask for a one-price installation and everything.
I would also suggest that we look at, I guess, a company that's been in the business for a long term, because, as you said, as soon as you buy it, it's gonna start becoming outdated. So, we need to look at somebody who's gonna be able to replace some parts, be in business, either on this system, or updating it to a newer one, and maybe we could get, you know, some kind of deal on updates. I don't know, but that's something to be considered.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Price. I think the direction I hear is that we will put it on the next agenda, just put it on the consent agenda. We, and this is something, Earl, you can make sure, we do want every item bid it out, that, that we can save money on through a bid process. Like Commissioner Price said, we want to make sure it's someone who's been in the business long-term and reliable. Also, if we allocate $309,400, what I'd like to do is, any monies that is unspent after this is bought, that needs to automatically, maybe this needs to be in the board action. But any monies that's not spent would revert back to the general fund. Because I know this, this is basically an estimate, and we're gonna do what we can to get it cheaper than that.
Absolutely.
Is everybody good with that? Commissioner Keegar?
I just don't want to extend this conversation any longer than we need to, but I just, I would just feel more comfortable if we had IT get the bid first, before we approve the money. Seems like we're just putting the cart in front of the horse right now. I mean, I don't think they would have any problem bringing us the bids, and then we approve the money, because they're not gonna spend it till after they get them anyhow. And that'd give us a little more time to hold on to that money, maybe, but I, I would just feel more comfortable if the majority would agree that they show us what it's gonna cost, instead of just estimating.
A good majority of the pricing that's on this sheet came from a number of vendors in the Charlotte area. So, just throwing that out as information. But, yeah, we can get you any information that you want.
And, well, you know, I've spent 25 years doing quotations in industry.
Absolutely.
And when somebody would call, we usually would give an estimate. When you're coming in with a purchase order, that price could get sharpened up a lot.
Okay. It's the pleasure of the board to go ahead and approve it. And keep in mind, when you approve it, the money's not gonna be spent, they still gonna have to bring the bid process back, it's still gonna be in the general fund until it's spent. You wanna go ahead and approve it?
Yeah.
Or do you want to just wait till they do the bids, and then look at it then? What's the pleasure of the board?
It's made to go ahead and approve it, because we put a limit on it, and if they bring it back, hopefully, it's gonna be less.
Okay.
It's worth a resolution to be up to or less than $309,000.
I guess what I'm saying is if the bid is more, then we're gonna have to redo it and have another resolution to...
No, we're not gonna spend more. It'll, it'll be...
What if it costs more? What if his estimates?
Then it...
We still gotta get the stuff.
We pay him big bucks to do his job, and if he's gonna come to us with this, it needs to be cheaper. Am I, it, will it be under this?
I'll do my best.
That's not a yes.
Well, if it's not, it's gonna have to come out of your pocket. Okay, I, I, unless I hear different, I, I think what we're gonna do is put it on the agenda, approve up to or less $309,400 to fix all this equipment. The monies will stay, we're gonna allocate it, but it'll stay, if I'm correct, it won't be spent until all this bidding process is done. And, and I would say this for Commissioner Keegar, once that's, once the bids are in, go ahead and send those out to the board, so we can look at those.
Okay. No problem.
Did you get all that, Donna? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Our next item is summary of tax office improvements by Mr. Jimmy Tanner. He is vowed to keep it under three minutes. I'm joking.
It won't take long.
Thank you, Mr. Tanner.
Good evening. I wanted to bring some information to you tonight, and, and provide a brief summary of some improvements and changes that we've made throughout the tax office over the last year. As you'll see as we go through these, most of these changes, they not only allow our office to, to operate more efficiently, we've saving the taxpayers' money by reducing our costs. We're increasing the customer service by allowing the taxpayers to have more interaction with our office, easier interaction... with our office, easier interaction, and also, some of these things are, help our employees make their job a little easier, or more user-friendly. So, if we can go to the presentation, let's see, is it up? Okay. What we're going to do is talk about some changes that we've already done, that's been put in place. Down in our collections counter at the front line, where people come in and pay their taxes, we implemented some check readers. The staff before had to key in all the routing numbers off the bottom of the checks, each ones that was presented for payment. As you know, they're very hard to read, and as you can imagine, at the very end of the year, in the first year, when we have a lot of people paying taxes, it was very difficult on our staff to key these numbers in, it was time-consuming. Purchased these check readers for about $165 apiece. Basically, it run the check through right quick, and electronically put them data, that data into the computer system, very much, very quicker, much quicker, and more efficient, and a lot easier on the eyes of our staff. You can imagine trying to read them numbers throughout an eight-hour day, so, that was a good change that we did. This past year, we changed print vendors. Well, you know, we had a print vendor that, from out-of-state, and they provided services, but we, there was a print vendor that we had changed to, that's in-state, they not only allowed us to reduce our cost, you know, if you know by working with our budgets, one of the largest expenses of a tax office is our mailings, postage, and the information, the documents, and the labor in doing our mailings. By changing, we save about 69 cents on every piece of mail we process. Now, along with the reduced savings, it allows us to use some new technology, and provide a better product. And as you see as we go through these, the print vendor that we went to is what allows us to do some of these changes that we've done. In the personal and business personal property section, we did a couple of things that we think's pretty significant. We implemented readers, and these is not like the readers that's in the collections office, these are scanners that is the capability of scanning barcodes, QR codes, and data matrix codes. And what we did, by implementing these scanners, which was about $180, $190 per piece, and we got about three of them, our staff does not have to open these abstracts, and manually go into the account, and data entry, the information as far as that listing, the data that was returned, and everything else. They simply scan the QR code that we put on these abstracts, and within that, I'm sorry, the data matrix code, and within that data matrix code is the information for that abstract, and it automatically, as soon as they scan it, it inputs that information to our system. So, it's, like I say again, way more efficient, way more easier on our staff. And it also gives capability to do many other things, since it'll read barcodes and QR codes, that we'll start implementing a little bit more going forward. The other, the other one is we're scanning our personal, and personal property and business property abstracts. It not only reduces the paper that we deal with, it eliminates the need for the temporary staffing we was having to do each year to file all the documents, and it made it much more efficient for our staff, because they don't have to deal with paper. We scan these documents through a process, and it puts an electronic scanned image of that document into the account, so our staff can pull up that account and process it by the electronic document that's tied to that account. So, that's savings we're going to have going into the future, we don't need the paper. You know, when taxpayers call and have questions, we don't have to go retrieve copies out of the file room, and then have to refile all that stuff, so, you know, this is a change that's really good for our staff as well. We did a process through our new print vendor in the United States Postal Service, that we cleanse our addresses. As we had said earlier, one of our biggest expense is postage, and the cost of processing our mailings that go out, such as bills and abstracts. We submitted a file of all our addresses to South Data, and then they have a process through the United States Post Office that they run this program through, to all these addresses, and it comes back with a list of every address that would not be delivered. And we're working, and I've got it on here as completed, but it's not quite completed, because we've working with our camera system provider to build a format where we don't even have to manually enter the 4,900 addresses that come back that need corrections. It's actually going to input and correct it by an export, it's going to correct the addresses in the system, we don't even have to do that manually. Now, when we talk about these changes, this costs us $750 to do this process, but we got back 4,900 addresses that need to be corrected for the US Post Office to be able to deliver them. When we mail something out that's not right, that's 49 cents. When it's returned as undeliverable, our staff has to open that piece of mail, they have to go into Accurant, which is 35 to 50 cents per transaction, to research and get the corrected address information. If we get that new information, then we have to put it right back in the envelope, put full postage, and send it out again. So, this is something for $750, you can see what savings this will be, not just the first year, but this is ongoing. The changes that we have in process now, they're not finished, we're in the process of putting them in now, is we're giving the taxpayers, we're implementing now, an option for the taxpayers to receive their tax bills electronically through email. And as you know, there's no postage, they can, if they choose to do this, we've got a website that they would go to and register, in other words, they'd have to agree to do this, they would register, once they register, they'd get their own login information, and when we send emails, when we send our tax bills, it would go to them in electronic format in the email. Now, for example, there's no paper, that, you know, the paper copies would be mailed, it's kind of a safety option, we implemented with it, we know emails change, people change computers, whatever. We have it set up, or having it set up, where if the taxpayer does not verify that they've received that email within five or seven days, we'll automatically send a paper copy. So, there'll never be a time when they do not receive their copy, but everyone that signs up and agrees to do this, that's going to be additional savings for the county of postage. And so, that's, you know, that's a good option. We did, if you remember, we had electronic data verification program that we implemented last year, for the taxpayers to go in and tell us about some properties that they may have that has changes, and we have a large volume of email addresses that we've had people that do that, so, we assumed that there'd be a good majority of people that would like to receive their emails electronic. The other thing is, rather than keeping up a piece of paper, we send in July to first August and pay at the end of the year, they'd have an electronic copy that they could keep for however long they wanted to. So, that's a good advantage for the taxpayer to have. Another process that we're setting up now is called, is a company called Auto Agent, it deals primarily with mortgage payments. The system now, we process our billing files generally in the month of July after tax rates is set. Mortgage companies pay in November, generally, that's when they pay in November. If you've got, you've got to think, there's a lot of changes between July and November. So, every one of these bill revisions, it means there's got to be some type of refund or something processed. The other part of this is not so much for our office, but for example, the finance department, due to this change, this system change we're doing, it's going to eliminate the largest majority of the checks and refunds that we have to process. If you remember back in like the January and February, file that comes to y'all for approval of refunds, it's a large volume of money, and it's labeled as refunds, it's really not refunds, it's not like we mess somebody's property up and give them the money back, it's simply where taxpayers pay, the mortgage companies pay, and they've paid us twice. So, then we have to manage that process of getting these names together, we have to send the finance to get it processed, it comes to you to be approved, and it goes back to finance for the checks to be cut. This will eliminate the biggest majority of that. And the reason it's done is because, rather than sending a file to the mortgage companies in July, and they paying in November, through our IT office in Auto Agent, they'll set up where this file is, it's uploaded every night, so when the mortgage company goes to pay, they've got a live file that's been corrected up to the point they pay. So, that eliminates all these double payments and bill revisions that we have to process. And the other best thing about this, there's no cost to this to the county. The mortgage companies pay for this process through Auto Agent, it's free to any tax office. So, this is, this is going to be a big advantage, not just to tax office, but for what y'all have to approve, and especially to our finance department. Now, that brings us to a couple of changes we've not done yet, we've tried to get them implemented before our bills this year. One of them is an upgrade to our Sturgis collections website, and another one being the internal lot box. The website upgrade, this is going to provide, like you say, a lot more capability for the taxpayers to go in and research their tax bills, they'll be able to go in and see the history of what they paid, bills that they have out there that may have not paid yet, they can go online and see all that information. It'll also give the taxpayers the ability to print their tax bills out, either the bills or the paid receipts. Now, if you remember back in the months that income tax filings is done, we have a big gathering in our office of phone calls, people calling wanting a copy of their paid receipt, because they want to file their income tax. Now, for every one of them, we have to do the research, print it out, stick it in the envelope, pay full postage, and mail it to them. This will allow taxpayers to go in and research their records, and not just print out a tax bill that's not paid, but print out an actual, exact copy of the paid receipt. So, that would eliminate the need for us to have to mail a lot of stuff out to the taxpayers, they can get it very easily themselves. They can use the same paid receipt to go to the motor vehicle department and get the blocks on their registrations removed. You know, the process now, they have to come to our office, we have to give them a copy of the receipt, and they have to go back to the motor vehicle department to get that registration block removed. They can actually print this receipt out, and it's fully authorized to use at the motor vehicle department to do that. It's a process in here where the citizens can go in and tell us about an address correction if they're moving, or if they just moved and we don't have that address correction, they can go in through a portal we have in this, and tell us what that address correction is, where we can process that. Another good thing for the taxpayer, we currently, our convenience fee now, that the credit card companies charge is 2.5%. We've compromised this down, it's 2.2% when we finish this upgrade, 2.2% with a 30 cent per fee transaction, so that's much cheaper than the 2.5% they had been paying previously. It also gives the citizens the opportunity to pay by e-check for 50 cents apiece, so that's another opportunity that they can go in and pay, pretty good. Another good thing is people that's got multiple properties that can go in through the cart process and pay a lot of trends, a lot of payments on, multiple payments in one transaction. So, that's a good feature of this. Now, where they'd have to go in and pay individually each time, they can lump them together and pay in one transaction. One thing I'd like to say, just the website, through a lot of changes we've done, we've saved a significant amount of money in our budget this past year. When we started talking about to Sturgis, the ones that provide this, the cost was going to be $6,500 upfront for the conversion, and a $200 a month ongoing maintenance fee. Well, over the last few months, we've negotiated that down to, it's a $4,500 fee upfront, and no additional monthly fee. So, that's, we've got that in hand. That was kind of a holdup on us, it's, you know, when you look at, you're like your money, you kind of figure what makes sense. We had a good website, but this really does add a lot of capabilities for our taxpayers to be a little more transparent and see what we have. So, that worked out very well. One of the biggest changes we're anticipating doing is going from the external lot box to an internal lot box. One of the things I'm sure you as commissioners probably have heard over the years is, why do I have to pay my tax payment for Gaston County and send it to somebody out of this county? I don't know, we get them calls all the time. With this process, every tax payment in our county would be mailed to our office and processed in our office. Now, so that's a good thing. We do have a lot of taxpayers, every time we mail our tax bills, we get a significant amount of calls. I don't like the idea of having to send my money to Charlotte, and so, that eliminates that. The funds is deposited in our account much quicker, we get to mail that morning, we process it, it's deposited electronic. The next item on here is payment issues corrected immediately, not later. This just adds to the situation of us getting our money in the bank quicker. The current process is, our payments are mailed to a lot box in Charlotte, they're not tax people, all they have is the files, if it doesn't match exactly, if the scanners doesn't read the payment stubs or the checks, all of that is put in a bag and mailed to us for the next day overnight, and then we have to manually process all that stuff. So, that just adds another day or two that our funds is not in the bank. With the processors, we do that real-time, it'll tell us what doesn't match, we go in and fix it right then before that batch is processed. So, everything's done much quicker and electronically, not manually. We can absorb these duties with the current staff we have, we don't need more help to do this. You know, we do motor vehicle transition, I've been talking to Luke, our collector, for ever since I come here, that we need to start being prepared to absorb some other duties, and shift some duties around to where we can do more, this is one of the things we can do. When you get to the end, you'll see where the money savings come in, but we don't need any more staff to do this, we're going to do this with our current staff. All our payments are currently mailed to the, that are coming into our office, which at the end of the year, the first year, we get thousands of payments, even though we have a lot box, they come to our office. We have to open them up and process them manually, which means go into the account, open it up, and post in payments by data entry. Everything we have will be run through the lot box automatically and electronically, which is much quicker. Sometimes it takes us a week or so to process all them payments, because it's the volume that comes in and the manual processing. If you look at the summary, the summary of the external lot box cost now, last year we spent $93,000 on the external lot box. And, you know, with the transition of motor vehicles, we estimated our lot box cost this year is going to be between 50,000 to 60,000, it, we don't know what that number is until the year's over. A little summary of the internal lot box, the upfront cost is $28,000, that's everything, the processors, two processors, maintenance, training, travel cost, everything, and then, after we do that 28,000 acquisition, our yearly cost going forward is 2,300 a year, that's all it costs us to operate our lot box. So, the good thing is, we've saved enough money that we can pay for this without any additional funding, funds from anywhere, and the money that we have budgeted for next year, we can probably remove from our budget. So, and so, as you can see, it's going to cost us somewhere 55,000 to 60,000 with the external going forward, 2,300 internal, and we get the payments mailed to our office, our staff processes it, and, you know, that's a really good situation. That's it, I didn't bring up every change we've done, we've done a lot of things in our office that's good, not just for us, but the taxpayers as well. We do believe in the transparency and being responsible and accountable for what we do, so, that's kind of the way we work things. If you have any questions on anything, I'd try to answer them.
Commissioner Keeger.
Thanks. I'm not a mathematician, but I think you went slightly over three minutes.
Oh, I will.
I just want to clarify something Mr. Tanner stated, in case people are listening, say, well, why in the world have we been mailing these bills to Charlotte? And it's just a matter of income. Back years ago, there was no bank in Gaston County that could get us credited that night, and over the course of a year, that was an awful lot of interest money that we earned for the county, and I'm glad to see the change is possible now with the difference in the lot boxes, but I just wanted to throw that out there, that's all I have.
Commissioner Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Tanner, for the presentation. I guess what my question is, every time we've had this presentation by you, we keep talking about our mailings are so much, on average, how many times do we mail? We know we have one, the original one, how many times do we mail to each individual as an average? And would it be, would it behoove the county to put each individual parcel that we send something to, just an administrative fee of whatever that number was, if it's a 49 cent administrative fee just for that mailing, to help oversee that cost? Because if that's our biggest cost, then maybe that would help reduce some of our issues we have, that would have that. If you know what I'm saying, we have the cost of the mailing for one time billed in, and if they did the email portion, or where they signed up and they got on, then that could be credited as well, give everybody the fair chance to do it, but if that's our biggest cost, to help, you know, offset some of that.
Good. One of the things we've offset is a lot of processes we've put in here, by cleansing our addresses, by changing the way we do our mailings, we, you'll see a big reduction in our mailings now. I'm not familiar with any, where it would, has a fee... I'm not familiar with any where that would, has a fee for mailing or anything. I reckon that's an option that we could, we could look at. I'm not sure. But, we do multiple mailings throughout the year. The main mailings that people are more familiar with is our property tax bills, which generally go out in July or August. And then our abstracts, our personal and business personal abstracts, about 25,000, we mail them out in the end, very end of December, first of January. But, throughout the year, we have other mailings as well, the discovery letter notices and stuff like that, farm use questionnaires. You know, we have a lot of periodic mailings to go out throughout the year, the main two being abstracts and the property tax billing.
And against what I would like to assume it as being, rather than somebody assuming it's a tax, I like to see people have the email version, as far as I said. Also, if we could get a suggestion to where we have more people who we have multiple listings of the same, you know, we may have 50 different properties that we could, you know, take into one consideration, or maybe some type of local pickup, you know, of larger property owners of 100 or more, such as your big property manager. Like I said, just trying to think of different things outside the box, not trying to put anything extra on our taxpayers as we see it, but just thinking outside the box of things that we can do to help, and I appreciate your presentation.
Yeah. Anybody that's got multiple properties and things that's in the same identical name, we do insert them all in one mailing. So, we do a lot of stuff now to reduce the cost, and our costs will continue to come down.
Thank you, Commissioner Brown. Commissioner Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I appreciate that input. Frankly, I feel like our citizens already feed enough as it is, so we'll probably, I don't know if I'd support any additional fees on those that can at least afford it. But, I do want to commend you on, it sounds like you're really taking a comprehensive look at the whole tax department, and I'm very grateful that you do that. I like the idea of the email. I mean, at the end of the day, that's going to save us a ton of money, and you're going to have a lot of people that really want to, would rather have that anyway. So, in addition to the cost savings to the county, it's going to really provide a service to the citizens that would prefer to deal that way. Also, as far as mailing it to Charlotte, I'm thrilled that we're doing that. I mean, the cost savings is a huge thing in and of itself, but just the perception of mailing it to the Gastonie address, I think is going to be really good. And, I mean, it even kind of irks me, you know, sending it, going to Charlotte, and even though I know why we do it, and Tom's right, there's a reason we do it because it benefits the county, it's still going to, it just looks better coming here. So, I appreciate you taking a look at that and, you know, really taking a second look and seeing what we can do about it. So, I appreciate the presentation and thrilled to hear about some of the changes.
Thank you. Another thing on the payments to Charlotte, this was only available because of the transition of motor vehicle bills. We'd probably not be able to do this if it wasn't for the motor vehicle bills being changed, because the volume of bills we had, we'd have never been able to process internally. So, you know, we probably didn't have any choice before, but with the transition to motor vehicle bills, now we can do that.
Any other comments? Thank you, Mr. Tanner, again. I do think we made a good choice when we hired you, constantly improvement after improvement. And I think since biblical times, tax collectors haven't been too well-liked, but I can tell you this, I hear more and more good things about what we're doing and just appreciate the work you do. Thank you.
We appreciate and appreciate y'all's support. Thank you.
Our next item is other matters. We'll start with Commissioner Brown.
That's Thomas, Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Brown. Commissioner Price.
Thank you. I just want to make the board, I know we're all aware of this, but we are beginning our budget talks about budget year 2014, 2015. And I know we talked about extending the bonds and using, issuing some more bonds, but I think we need, or something needs to be talked about, about with the Board of Education, about new schools. I don't think we'll be able to get any more bond money at the rate that we got these. Awfully good rate on the bonds that were passed in 2007. And I know we've talked about the age of Belmont Middle and Stanley Middle, and the bonds were extended to 2017. And I just, you know, after we approve this budget year, we're only going to be looking at two budget years prior to the bond's extension date coming up. So, I just, if they're going to make a move about new schools, I'd really like to see something talked about and put in a plan that if we're going to have to look at using this bond money, because at some point in time, I don't know how much longer, these two schools are just going belly up. And I don't know how, what the timeline is on that, but we're not going to be able to get any bonds issued at the rate we've got these for awfully long time. So, I just, if we could, I don't know what committee it is on the Board of Education, but if we could get them to get some kind of plan years out that we could see if we are going to need these bonds before they expire. That's my concern. If we don't.
New schools.
Yeah. And there may be more than these two mentioned. I know the study they had done recommended closing three, and I don't know how building, replacing these two middle schools would be in a plan that might incorporate closing of three, if that were to come to be true. I just, I just haven't heard anything since our meeting with them. I don't know if they're planning to do anything or, but I just don't want to see these bonds expire and us get caught with having to bill some after they're gone. That's my concern. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Price. Earl, could you find out, or could you let school superintendent, we'd like, is a plan, or we would, we want an idea of what type of plan they have next five, 10, 15 years for new schools? We understand repairs. Are they looking at building new schools or things of that nature? Will that suffice?
If it addresses that issue of what happens before they bond in life, will this?
You got that?
I'll certainly follow up with that.
Thank you, Earl.
Can I caveat off something?
Commissioner Brown.
As long as it's not 2003. We asked that question the other night, and we sort of got a answer. We'd like to have, you know, typical timeline.
And if you want, maybe you can get Donna to write a letter for myself requesting that. And if you need clarification, you can email Commissioner Price. Commissioner Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The only thing I've got is another reminder for Saturday, the Karamot Community Challenge. I hope the whole board will be there. I know Chairman Philbeck will be speaking at the event Saturday. Commissioner Brown, he's going to be riding his bike, probably, I think, the 40 or 50-mile...
Livermore Saturday.
Livermore Saturday.
One mile?
Anyway, Commissioner Brown, I heard a rumor that Pastor Pierre Crawford will be riding 40 miles this Saturday. But, anyway, I'll be running in the 5K, so I hope you guys will come out. This is going to be a lot of fun. It's really, a really good thing, real big for our community, really promoting health, healthcare, and it's going to be really nice. So, I hope you can all make it this Saturday at Forest View. 5K starts at nine o'clock. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Williams. Commissioner Carpenter.
Well, I might can do the one-mile walk.
Okay.
Okay. Well, I'd like to enlighten you. Myself and manager Earl Mathers went to Carnesville yesterday and participated in the study that the state is doing on transportation corridors, which includes all modes of transportation. It's a good exercise that they're doing. They're updating it and trying to focus on where we can maximize our efforts in improving the economy in this state, getting jobs and so forth. So, that's ongoing. And then today, I went to Raleigh for the North Carolina County Commissioners Tax and Finance Committee, and we had Mr. Richard Lindon, I believe is the way his name says. He is the new man that's hired through the, well, kind of separate from the Department of Commerce, and you've met him, I think, Tracy. And he was giving us information on the direction the state and the legislators moving on, kind of redoing our economic development efforts. It's quite extensive, and I express our concern that we're in a guessing mood of what they're doing. It hadn't been presented real clear to us, and I think some things are evolving. But, all in all, I think they're moving in a good direction. It's just trying to figure out how we locally, with our EDC, is going to fit in with what they're doing. So, but that was interesting. And while Tommy Alman's here, I just wonder what's the weather for tomorrow. I hear we're going to have storms, Tommy.
Commissioner Keger. All right.
I think they wait till it happens, and then they get it right.
Okay. Thank you.
Again, I'm only sharing what I get from the national...
Well, thanks for the information you sent.
Commissioner Keger.
Yeah, two things. First, and I know this has been on, commissioners have been approached about this, and I've made a commitment this year. I don't know how. I'm going to try to come up with some recommendations and suggestions, but I don't know that in my 16 years on this board, that the commissioners have given the teachers a supplement increase, although I don't think it's a very good system. It is where we are, and I know we're working on a formula to give the county employees a step grade, cost of living increase, whatever we want to call it. And I am going to, I am going to bring forth some discussion on us giving consideration to the teachers. It's hit me firsthand. I know the teachers are leaving to all the counties around us, I think. I know York County. I know Lincoln County. I know Mecklenburg County. And it's sad. I know firsthand what it's, you know, what it has, what effect it's had. We've got teachers making eight to 10% less than they were four years ago, you know, no income from the state, no income increase from the county. So, I'm not trying to surprise anybody or, you know, make us look bad, because I'm in this too, and I want, I want to have some kind of discussion about it. And the second thing I want to say is, to those that are listening, anyone that got out to vote, I appreciate it. If you considered me, I appreciate it even more, and I hope that I'm able to do the best job capable so that we can make Gastonie County a better place to live, work, and play. On a little sad note with regards to the election, I found out yesterday, actually, the election has been confirmed or christened or whatever it is. It's official. But, we had about a little under 8.3% turnout in our primary, and of 100 counties in North Carolina, I'm sorely, I'm very much disappointed to announce that Gastonie County came in 100 out of 100 counties in North Carolina. We were the lowest percentage voting county in the state, and I confirmed that with our elections director today. So, that's just something for us all to think about. A lot of people call us, complain. Very rarely, honestly, do we get any attaboys or smack on the backs. Usually, we hear when things aren't good. But, I tell you, it's, when you see that 8% of, 100% of the voters go out and vote, it's just sad, and I sure hope people think about that in the future.
Thank you, Commissioner Keger. Maybe if we had some better candidates, people would come out.
We'll give them something two years.
Right, 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 right. I had to give Commissioner Keger a whole time. I would like to pass along my condolences, Chairman, to the family of Secretary Keith Crisco. He passed away suddenly, former Secretary of State.
And not Commerce.
Yeah, Commerce of State, Commerce.
Secretary.
Secretary. And he's a Democrat, but if we called on him, he would answer our calls, come to Gastonie County, and had a good relationship with him. So, our condolences go out to his family. With that said, this concludes your work session for tonight. Our next regular meeting is May the 27th, 6:00 PM, at the Harley Big Gaston Jr. Public Forum Courthouse. Thank you for watching. If you have questions or comments, please telephone our clerk, Donna Spectacular Buff, at 704-866-3196, and share them. This meeting is adjourned by unanimous consent.